I'm going to call the Springfield City Council, work session to order with roll call.
Mayor Van Gordon.
Yeah.
Councillor Weber, here. Councillor Mo.
Yep.
Councillor Rodley, here. Councillor Blackwell, here. Councillor Doyle, here. And Councillor Busher.
Here, thank you.
We've got three items tonight. The first one is Masterpiece in Charges update with Nate, Neil and Nick.
And Nick will be joining us tonight, but I'm Neil Wilbringer, Budget Procurement Manager, and I'm here with Nathan Bell, Finance Director. And so we're here to follow up on an earlier work session back from February, where Nick actually asked for guidance on what CPI to apply to a narrow section of the Masterpiece in Charges schedule, specifically the building, engineering, fire and life safety, municipal court, and then general sort of generic fees was in the schedule. And so he asked for what CPI to apply to the Masterpiece in Charges schedule. And so I think, you know, ultimately, well, let me take a step back. We've taken your guidance and we've got a revised red line version of the Masterpiece in Charges schedule in your packet tonight. And the guidance that we heard from February was that we really should take a look at each of the sections within the Masterpiece in Charges schedule and try to identify what makes sense for cost recovery for that particular area and really try to dial in, you know, what what sort of cost recovery metric is applicable to each of those sections. So we've tried to do that and that should now be included in that red line version of your packet. So the, for the most part, the changes that you'll see are a 4.4% escalator applied to most of the sections of the fee schedule. The logic there being that that is the most recent year-over-year change in our personal services here in the city. So the cost of our labor really is the largest driver of our operating costs. And so staff felt that it was a reasonable approximation for the year-over-year cost, you know, operating cost increase and and so made sense to apply to at least the majority of the fee schedule. But there are a couple of holdouts in the areas that we treated differently. So first was planning fees and as you all know, Mark and the Community Development Division is working on it. An analysis with PSU and so there were no changes to the planning fee section of the schedule. And then the other area where we didn't make a change was to the building safety section. And that's all of the fees related to building inspections and the, basically, we applied no increase to the building safety fees. And the logic there being that the reserve for the Building Safety Fund is quite healthy. And, you know, so staff feel that we can not apply any escalator to the Building Safety Section and still be able to maintain services in a sustainable way, you know, at least for the next several years. And so I, I think that really sort of touches on all of the background and kind of what brought us here. So unless I'm missing anything, Nathan, I think we'll leave, open it up to questions and any other concern that the council may have.
All right. Is there anything in here that there is to feed for?
This thing.
No, you're, you're right. I mean, it's a, it's a lot of fees. And as, as strange as it may be, I think the intent, you know, by combining all of them is really to simplify things just to make sure that all of the different fees that we charge are, you know, updated consistently and managed in a kind of one single spot. So it's, it's a lot of fees, but our intent really is to try and simplify things.
I understand.
So does anybody have any questions about fees and is everybody comfortable with a 4.4% number that they generally proposed? Go ahead, Joe.
So, pretty random, but the library card fees for the three months, six months and one year. Yeah, I'd look at the figures and the six months is exactly half of a one year and the three months is exactly half of a six month. So what would encourage anybody to buy the one year?
That's a good question. I mean, I think that the intent of, of, you know, the library folks to, you know, basically make everything consistent was that, you know, it, it made it easier and simpler to manage. But I might look to Emily to, to speak to details.
Yeah, it really was about equity. There are some people that can't afford to pay for the full year. And so because they can only afford to pay three months at a time or six months at a time, they're being penalized. So there are plenty of people that pay the full year if they can afford it, but the people that can't afford to pay the full year all at once is just all broken down.
That doesn't make a lot of sense to me. Only because, only, you know, it's like, okay, if we have people that cannot afford the $10, is it $10 for six months to four months?
Twenty. Yeah, it's, it's, it's $25. So we raised the, the year fee from 95 to 100. And then we were trying to bring it in line with, so if you can only pay for half a year, you're not being.
No, I understand that, but I'm just saying that that system doesn't make a whole lot of sense because what we want to do is incentivize people coming to the library, I would think.
Right.
And so if you have the same fees at the same cost per month, there's no incentivization at all, at all. So why even have a six-month or a one-year card?
Well, if people can't pay for a full year.
I know, I get it. If they can't pay for a full year, they just buy a three-month, right?
Right.
So why pay for a full year when it's the same price per month as a three-month?
Well, people that can't afford to pay for a year do.
You don't understand what I'm saying. So if I wanted a, if I wanted a six-month card, it's half the price of a one-year card.
Yeah.
So what's, what would make me want to just go buy a one-year card when I could buy two six-month cards for the exact same price?
To keep my own money instead of letting you have it.
Well, for some people, they can't afford to pay it all at once, so.
I get that.
What I don't, I understand what you're saying is that they're, they're going to pay the six-month card and then come back and pay, and then they pay it again in six months.
Right.
And it's still, it's, but for, for some people, paying that, you know, $100 all at once is just so that keeps them from using the library and having access.
I'm just saying is that there's no point in anybody buying a one-year card, whether they can afford it or not. That's what I'm saying. Because if it's the same price per month, then, then why do it? You know, it, it's not a matter of having, whether they can afford a one-year card or not. It's a matter of, if they buy a six-month card, they can go in and pay 50 bucks because that's all they can afford. And six months later, they still want to go to the library, they pay 50 bucks, go for six more months as, and it's the same as $100 for the year. So I just, it, it seems like, and, and you're claiming because it's easier to manage, but it seems like you're dealing with more cards than you even have to if you're going to have the same rate per month.
So they, I mean, they keep the same card, they pay each time. It's not like we're giving them a new card.
So I would just get rid of the year cards and the six-month cards and go with three-month cards. Then everybody could afford it and it's the same rate for everybody.
But then that is more work because people that pay for a one-year card, they're having to come back.
Facetious. Never mind. I, never mind. I'll shut it.
Okay, Cory.
I was just going to say that I, I appreciate the multiple choices of the three, six and 12 because I think that there are people who would be like, oh, it's just as easy for me to do it. A year I have the money, that's fine. And it's, it's more of a, less of an incentivization and more of a customer service to make it as accessible as possible in all the ways. So it makes great sense to me, particularly the way our library values are in terms of how do we make as much possible, as accessible as possible.
Victoria.
I'm just making a quick point. The, the idea of giving somebody a discount for a year isn't penalizing the person that can only afford for a month. Why would I give you my money for a year when I can keep my money and use my money the way I want to use my money? Because every three months, give you money is to actually incentivize someone who does, can't afford it to give you the $100 for the year. So then you have it rather than it sitting in my bank account and having it. So that's, I don't, I don't see how it's a penalizing of somebody who can't afford it. I would never spend a hun- $100 on something that I could pay in three-month increments.
It's just a stack of balls.
Yeah, it's not. Okay, so I'm good with the 4, 4.4% as well. The one question I had and maybe, and this was well, Cory and I had a constituent sort of question that sort of popped up, which was about the late fee. And it sounded like it's, that was the one from this morning for what? A Street or L Street? Where the lady was getting penalized was, had a low balance, but the penalty rate was $10 no matter what. And I don't know if this is the right time to sort of jump into that, that one and we can get the email sent over to you guys to take a look at it. But it was just that right combination of, hey, look, I don't have that much of a balance. So the penalty was large enough that it, you know, seemed excessive.
I know, I can speak to that, Mayor, because I talked to the lady and I looked at it, so.
Could you give a pre overview since not everybody had the email?
Yeah, so in essence, it's, the fee she was paying for was a $25 annual registration for a fire alarm or alarm fee, which we charge. The issue is that section which covers about 20 fees, it's like the first section in our master fee schedule just has like a one-size late fee charge, which is $10 or 2.4% or whichever is larger and it accrues monthly if you're late. So for a $25 fee, if you're late three months, you're paying more in penalty fees or late fees than you are for the actual renewal. So I think this is a great opportunity if we want to just say, should it just be a percentage? Should it just be a one-month type deal? Because I do think it is. Because we do have some large fees in there, which maybe that at the time made sense. And then last year, we just, for some reason, had an inordinate amount of folks who were late. Whether they weren't receiving the notices or, or not, I don't know. And so we're changing up our process on how we get notices out, whether we notice too early, too late, or what have you, but we're trying to work on that. But yeah, I do think this is a good opportunity because we're opening, you know, we're doing this. That maybe that one-size-fits-all late fee or penalty fee really isn't the right calculation.
Yeah, and I, you know, and I'm open to like, let's take out the $10 minimum, minimum payment and just, and and just go with the 2.4% across the board.
That's so much on $25.
Do you want to do more than?
I'm just going to add a little bit context to that. It's, I would ask if we're noticing those late payments? Because if we have to send out a mailing that is basically representing the time of staff and whether you send it out a notice for a $25 fee or a $1,000 fee, the amount of work to send out the notice is roughly the same. And as a consumer, I've also seen late fees like that on small balances. I'm like, what? But then when you understand the story behind it, it makes more sense. So I want to just be careful that we're not underselling ourselves in terms of staff.
So let, let me, let me tell you the other, I guess the other direction, but I'm open for a different alternative than, you know, that gives, that gives you guys, you know, a, a way to sort of entrust it in a way that isn't overly costly, right? So, you know, the story I tell at work sometimes is, you know, if you don't know, I'm working in a, in, in a health, in a, for a health insurer. Sometimes it costs hundreds of dollars to process something that is only, you know, a couple, a couple of dollars, right? So maybe there's a smarter way to do it. So maybe it's not the $10 fee, maybe you guys can just take it back and go, okay, is there a, a way to refine this in a little bit better of a way? So we don't have those situations where we're charging people consistently that high of a penalty. And then we're still, you know, recouping, recouping our costs. Maybe it's a process change.
Okay, that's right.
Go ahead.
Have you checked, now I know that sending out the notices is very expensive. Management are trying to track all those things. It's got to be onerous and do all cities send out late notices on permits or is that just a? I mean, it seems like, I know that, that there's different state agencies do not send late notices on licensing. And when they go to get a license and it's expired, they haven't, they have a late fee. The intranets are operating without a license, then they have a liability position that they place themselves in. So are we, is it really our job to give people a notice by saying, hey, you're late? Or you're going to be late or you're going to expire. That's, it's putting a lot of work on ourselves when kind of being enablers and saying, watch your licenses, watch your expirations. If you're late, it's going to be this much money to reinstate. As, you know, and it may be applicable for a notice that's very important, for example, that you don't want them to be expired. So you want to send a notice, but seems like a notice for a very small permit type thing is more trouble than it's worth. And if a person's expired, then they have, they suffer their own ramifications by having an expired permit and maybe a penalty when it's discovered, hey, you're expired, you no longer have a license. Here's your fine. Don't let it lapse. That's, seems like that's what a lot of folks do, but.
And that was a rhetorical statement more on a possibility of why that existed. I think the guidance I'm hearing is for us really to look and make sure that because the management process is expensive. If the fees that we're collecting are less work than the time spent managing, you have to ask yourself if you should even be doing it. So what I'm hearing is start to look at these with an eye to make sure that we're getting you know, benefit for what we're doing.
Yeah, and I, I think the lesson from that email was just to take, take a moment and go, okay, right? Like, maybe, you know, you guys take it back and workshop that part a little bit. So you guys are good on 4, 4.4% and then we'll, we'll see it in regular session in a couple of weeks. All right, anything else? All right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Right, Code Enforcement Program reconfiguration.
Yeah, I'll kick us off and then I'm going to step back and let them do the main presentation, but good evening. I think y'all know me, Council Mayor, Development Director. I'm excited here to introduce the Code Enforcement Program. Charlie Kent, our current and only Code Enforcement Officer in the program. And then Mark Russner, current Planning Manager. One of the first things I started working on even his interim was code enforcement. Our Code Enforcement Program is inundated right now. Triageing a lot of calls, things like that, but it's also not working very efficiently. And so I think we're very fortunate to have Charlie, who is very passionate and very excited to bring forward some changes and looking at how to improve and make us better. We have support from a lot of other departments in making these improvements. And so what we're at looking tonight is Charlie's going to present his phased approach, which is a multi-year process to get us there and what that's going to take. And then we're just looking for council input on that process and any observations or input you may have to improvements. With that, I'm just going to let them take it over.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time tonight. My name is Charlie Kent, as Jeff said, and I'm the city's Code Enforcement Officer. We're here this evening to discuss the Code Enforcement Program. I'll provide you with a general idea of the current program status and introduce some concepts that will help grow this program as the city grows and further densifies. Very easy to get into the weeds when discussing code enforcement. So I'd like to stay away from specific locations or issues where code enforcement has been used or may be used in the past. The conversation I'd like to have after the presentation is more geared towards the current principles and efficacy of code enforcement and those ideas how we can do things better. I'd like to come away from this meeting with a better understanding of council goals and priorities for the program specifically and a general consensus for support of reconfiguring the program. Please keep in mind that the presentation is a broad overview and will cover the concepts with very broad strokes. In June, we'll be coming back to you with a much more detailed account of the toolbox of solutions that we'd like to implement. Last fall, Neil, Jeff and Mark made a commitment to revamping the program. They've supported me since then. I'm happy to say that we've made considerable progress as a team. I started by attending the the American Association of Code Enforcement's annual conference back in mid-October of last year. ACE, as it's called, is the national, excuse me, is the only nationally recognized association for code enforcement and is the only organization which provides national standards for officer certification and agency accreditation. I came away from this conference with a ton of notes and also a, beginnings of a plan to modernize code enforcement within Springfield. Since then, I've been researching, reading and talking to a bunch of folks about best business practices and enforcement concepts. And I put together some ideas that we can apply to the city and I've created a phased program for the implementation. I'd like to use the following phrase to frame the theoretical concept of code enforcement. I was going to read it.
Sorry.
No problem. I think I can make that work. For all the lofty objectives, regulations may be designed to achieve the means by which they are enforced become the test of their utility in addressing community needs. More specifically, code enforcement is a community service. It is the practical application of responding to and resolving non-compliance with the laws, ordinances and permits that the city uses to govern land use. Program operates as part of the Community Development Division and is involved in a wide variety of issues. Code enforcement officers don't respond to emergency calls for service, but we do work in hand or hand in with the city's other enforcement agents. Like them, we're guided by the law. The Civil Enforcement of Code, or excuse me, the Civil Enforcement of Code Infractions Act is defined in the Springfield Municipal Code by Sections 5.600 to 5.626. Now, as a code officer, I need to be able to recite code in a variety of situations. So I promise I'll only give you one today in this presentation. 5.600 describes the intent of code enforcement. It states, it is the intent of Sections 5.600 to 5.626 to encourage voluntary compliance with certain city ordinances and the city code through inspection, notification, and where the, where appropriate, the granting of reasonable compliance times. And in those cases where voluntary compliance is not obtained or where the granting of time is not appropriate to establish and implement civil forfeit, excuse me, a civil infraction procedure and scheduled forfeitures for violations of certain ordinances. This ordinance is further intended to protect the health, safety and welfare of a cit- of the citizenry. Now, we use a phrase from that section of the code to informally define the city's approach to code enforcement. Our highest mandate is to encourage voluntary compliance. Officers approach every case through that lens. Compliance starts and ends with a heavy, healthy dose of compassion, especially with every enforcement action taken. Within the Springfield Municipal Code, there are 47 specific instances where code enforcement has the authority to use the civil infraction procedure. Additionally, the civil, or excuse me, the Springfield Development Code, the Building Safety Code and the Fire Code are or may potentially be enforced through the civil infraction, infraction procedure. Right now, the entire compliance process is carried out from beginning to end by one FTE. The Code Enforcement Team recently welcomed a .25 FTE Administrative Support Specialist, who was fantastic, to assist with the first response to complaints and frontline administrative needs. While that support has been invaluable, it's not sufficient for true operational needs. The current compliance process is detailed in the Municipal Code. It includes the determination of violations, investigation and notifications. This isn't a one-stop, one-notice case closed process. This is a month, excuse me. Officers monitor compliance plans developed in partnership with the people responsible for the violations. And we work exhaustively, exhaustively with them to resolution. Sometimes this is a month-long, month-long process. On the few occasions where compliance is not achieved, a civil citation is issued to the responsible person. This core process often includes multiple citations and appearances over extended times, sometimes years. Additionally, I've recently used the abatement process to resolve the city's most egregious cases. This requires an administrative warrant and is required for lawful abatement. This also includes the contract out for the big lift of cleaning up these baby projects. These are some of our current challenges. The program lacks appropriate staffing levels and new officer training. There's been an eight-month vacancy for the second full-time officer position and we don't have a training platform for new officers. The program lacks strategic correction and there aren't standard benchmarks that we can use for improvement. The code's one-size approach to resolving code violation is ineffective, cumbersome and it takes too long. The workflow process and complaint triage system currently operates at only the most basic levels. Staff find themselves repeatedly falling into the same black holes and we lack the resources to effectively address this as a root issue. Right now, the city's only, only enforcement authority is a sledgehammer. The civil citation process has one universal consequence. It's a significant time investment and it often isn't immediately effective. Some concepts of a successful code enforcement program are we need dedicated and trained staff. We need clear procedures and a broader toolbox to provide an effective response to community problems. We need to develop our nuisance enforcement process to include a more flexible approach to onsite engagement and enforcement. Our approach to the city's broader enforcement process should include a higher level of program input. When a code or an ordinance is drafted, we need to ask, how will this be enforced before we approve it? Laws are designed to be enforceable. Enforcement without consequence isn't very effective. Just asking nicely. The enforcement process should start with education. Many violations begin because of ignorance, but become complicated if clear expectations aren't communicated and followed up on. We need to be in the field more and available to the community. As a team, we need to be able to provide a consistent service regardless of the circumstances. We need to develop usable data to set benchmarks and create strategic plans to improve the program's effectiveness. And lastly, objective credibility and industry benchmarks are required to continuously improve. I've put together a timeline for rolling out the proposed reconfiguration for the code enforcement program. And I've developed these three phases to provide a broad overview of some specific actions that we'll take to implement some of these proposed changes. Phase one is reestablishing the foundation. We need to fill staffing needs. By creating a working manager role, we need to fill the existing officer vacancy. And we need to expand administrative support and work to really find additional resources for an additional officer. We need to create a policy and procedure manual and develop strategic goals and establish a training cycle for officers. We will obtain code enforcement specific software for program management and administration and redevelop our workflow process to be more efficient. And we'll need to talk better with our city partners in the Police Department, the Fire Marshal's Office, Finance and Operations. We'll need to develop a more robust complaint system. And the program will adopt modern principles to fit Springfield's needs and then we need to train to those standards. Phase two is to get good at it. We should be an effective tool the city can use in preventing crisis and a resource for immediate resolution and response to community complaints. We need to develop community-wide engagement through neighborhood and volunteer organizations and refine our educational outreach through a more consistent boots-on-the-ground effort and a little bit of proactive engagement. We need to develop and utilize analytics for geographic or project-specific proactive enforcement with community members and council leadership. We also need to prepare a fiscal year 25 budget proposal for additional officers and FTE. And phase three is to right-size. So we'll need to review operational benchmarks to see what's working and what's not. And we'll need to pivot or change as necessary. As the city and division needs grow, we should explore more proactive projects and possibly adopt parallel enforcement programs. We also need to refine existing policies and procedures, including any municipal code updates as needed. And then we'll receive national accreditation through ACE. You know, code enforcement is not just a resource for enforcing the city's code. The program is a part of building better communities. It increases livability standards, protects the health and safety of community members and the value of private property. Is a frontline resource for community education and outreach. Thank you very much for your time with the presentation. I'd like to open up the discussion if there are any questions that you you have and I can answer.
All right, are there any questions?
Very good.
I'm just curious, like a city of Springfield size, how many officers are usually, do they have? I mean, is there's just one, is that my understanding? It's you?
So typically, there's two officers within the city.
Is that normal for comparable by city?
It, you know, in in my humble opinion, no, but code enforcement is really city-specific, so the city of Corvallis is going to do things. The same basic fundamental things, the same, but they may do, you know, additional programs that require additional FTE. City Bend, I think they have like eight officers on staff, but they're also much more proactive and they engage with the transient population quite a bit more, so it's really up to each city and how they define their own program.
Steve?
Cities constrained financially, every time we have a budget process. We want to get more people and we don't have the money for them, that's probably why they're back on getting new assistance. How's that gonna work?
You know, I I believe right now, Council Mo, that we're we're able to implement this as a phased program and I think we'll see the value added as we redevelop and get better at what we do.
That doesn't tell me how much money is gonna hire that next guy. Value added, I understand.
Sure, sure, and and you know, to be very clear, we don't have an ask for FTE today. There'll be further details more specifically around the the changes in existing processes in the June session. In September, we may have a small ask for additional administrative FTE.
Victoria?
What?
Well, you you kind of look like you wanted to jump in on this. You just psyched me out then.
No, it just sort of explains, because before I was a city councillor, I've had a real problem with a neighbor that likes to put their basketball hoop in an ADA ramp in my neighborhood and I've called multiple times and I'm like, you know, I don't care if they have it on a sidewalk, I don't care it's in the street, like I know those aren't okay, but I don't mind that. But like, straight up in an ADA ramp drives me crazy and they and they did get contacted and they doubled down and now they've got weights on so that it can't move, but I'm just like, so I just kind of gave up and now I understand that that's like pretty low on the totem pole of things that you have to respond to. But I mean, I just wonder if there's people in the community that are saying, man, my stuff's not getting, you know, I'm making calls and nobody's coming or you know what I mean? That's gotta be frustrating.
It's it's a it's a great statement and yeah, folks are pretty pretty anxious about it. A lot of them are also pretty understanding. You know, they they see what's what's happening and when we tell them about what we're doing, then they understand what the issues are and what some of the hurdles are.
So does code enforcement also cover things like the the tall grass during fire season? I know a lot of people get concerned about fireworks and like people that don't mow their lawns and it and it or there's lots, empty lots that are up. Is that your department or is that something that like Public Works or the Parks or somebody else does?
So so regulation is ours and on the commercial or industrial side, we do monitor tall grass and weeds on an extreme level. However, in the residential area, we don't.
Right, right. So it sounds like you have a hundred and sixty open cases today, right? So if you think about, I'm gonna ask it sort of two ways, right? One of them is you're you're sort of working them as quickly as you can. Are some of those so low priority that they're gonna go stale before you get to them? Yeah, and so do we? Let's see, is it at a plan, are we just sort of scrubbing those reports or is everything getting an eye, you know, some eyes put on it today to see if it's still an actual issue?
I I appreciate that. A a key to code enforcement is our integrity and so if we're gonna tell someone that we're gonna investigate their complaint, that's what we're gonna do. So we respond to every complaint that we receive. Sometimes they're silly and we go ahead and but, excuse me, I didn't mean to. In that regard, we'll be looking at every every single one and and closing the the record so that there's no follow-up. But there's still an investment investigating the complaint.
So out of those hundred and sixty-three cases, right? If I think about them, we only hear about the absolute worst of the worst that you've gone to court multiple times for, right? So is that all the hundred and sixty-three? Like, how many of them are sort of minor, you know, sort of low low priori, like low priority, low complexity, whatever term you might choose, right? So are they, you know, how many are the the big ones we see on the news sometimes and how many do you think are sort of the just sort of low complexity?
In in terms of analytics, we're very, very limited by our software constraints. And so anecdotally, I can tell you about fifty percent of the complaints perceived would be geared towards low priority response. Another twenty-five percent would be a medium priority, meaning someone's obstructing right of way. And then the the higher high priority cases are vacant homes or seeing a lot of garbage. You know, it it really runs the gambit when you include the development code and some of the other issues.
Okay, and then I guess other couple of comments that I have is, look, I know this is multiple conversations, so you know, I'm like, I'm good with the material, I'm glad we're jumping into modernize this, especially since if it would create sort of tools and processes that deal with the, you know, make it easier to address the lower complexity cases and, you know, be able to spend more time on the higher complexity cases makes a lot of sense to me. The number one thing I hear from the public when they have a code enforcement issue, especially if they get into the bad ones, is they're just not equipped with any information about how long this is gonna take, why it's taking so long, right? Like, and you know, the the feedback I give them is sort of trust the process, right? Like, it will get there eventually, it is a slow, cumbersome process, but it will get there eventually. But I think there's a real gap in the, you know, in how informed the public feels about these these sort of bad situations about what what realistically the timeframe it's gonna take.
Sure, and I I appreciate bringing to light kind of the the complexity of it. And code enforcement is a human problem. It it's not just a bag of garbage on the driveway. You know, we deal with a a ton of different issues that that our communities face with, so an an aging population doesn't have the capability necessarily of physically going out to take care of this, whereas the neighbor who complained about it three months ago, you know, they could very well just go pick up the the bag of garbage right themselves, whereas somebody's not able to do that. And and that kind of situation is pretty common. And and so we we don't have the mechanism right now to reinform the complainant of the status of their system. That's something that we're we're looking at incorporating into the software, where each time an inspection is completed, the complaint is notified of the results of that inspection. There are there's some information that's not appropriate to share for sure.
Right.
But folks want to know, hey, you know, is this gonna get fixed or or what are you doing? Sometimes that's a five, ten, fifteen-minute conversation off the phone as well.
Yeah, so can I just point out, you might be talking about how many of our complaints are anonymous as well? So we do get a fair amount that there's not the ability to follow up on. So that is a pretty significant amount of the complaints come in as anonymous complaints.
Right.
Yeah, um, yeah, there's nothing like, the only thing that I saw that I really had an issue with was if you look at your timeline going out to twenty-eight is probably a little bit on the long side. And I would like, and I know it's gonna, it's gonna develop, right? When you go through the, when you guys continue to refine that, that just struck me as from a from from a phase completion perspective, right? Like, a little bit on the long side to get get through this. But the material, my thought was really good. I'm 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 open to the next conversation. I still have same question Steve does, which is, hey, if there's eventually an FTE, ask, you know, what are the financing and how do we do it? Which I think is reasonable. One thing I am looking for in, you know, in the next, in the next version, how do we create sort of tiers to give you the tools to deal with, deal with actual cases? I guess easier or with, you know, with more efficiency based on their complexity, right? And then how do we tag other parts of the other departments so that people have an experience like it's one city when we show up, like, you know, I know PD is a big part of this and the same people that you have those hard code enforcement complaints with, you know, they're going out to see a couple of times. So one of the things I'm kind of looking for is, well, how do we get to sort of a unified response to this in a way that doesn't feel so just jointed?
We've got some ideas that I'd love to share with the engine. We need to develop a a few more of it, but I really, really like that one city response.
So, perfect, Joe.
So it could be me and and when I read all through this material, it seems like there was, I don't know if it's the right word, is insinuated or dropped some seeds down as far as enforcement is concerned and you're talking about or I read that it's complaint-driven and that you want to look at that part of it. And the question I have is that, because we're not caught up today in this complaint-driven, correct?
That's correct. We're not, we're not solely complaint-driven.
You're not solely complaint-driven.
We are, excuse me.
Okay, so at least we're not violating that policy. So when you're asking for additional staff, what you're asking for is to be able to maintain or stay caught up with the workload created by the complaint-driven work. Correct? Or are you suggesting that there's more FTE so therefore we can work our way out of the complaint-driven work and move into observation enforcement?
If I understand it, that would be the process is that additional FTE would would allow us a little bit more proactive enforcement in terms of project-specific or geographically specific issues. The current platform of complaint-only response, city response, sounds fantastic. Until you understand who the complainants are. And and these are folks who are traditionally very comfortable contacting authorities, very comfortable within that process. And it's not exactly equitable across the board. A lot of marginalized or historically marginalized communities don't feel that same comfort and aren't comfortable reporting code violations, very obvious sort of, and sort of code violations.
And if I could just interject too, we've had multiple conversations with our city attorney's office about the equity concerns around complaint-based program and what that means or how that looks. So it may be that we're still complaint-based, but that one, I think the mayor alluded to kind of a triaging or tiering approach within that complaint base. But all and and Charlie alluded to getting software, getting better analytics, collecting data. So we make sure, we have had examples of people basically weaponize our process against their neighbors. And so there's a real fairness concern with that type of using our code enforcement tool to do that. So that's what we just want to be really cognizant of and try and not have us being used as a tool for people in the community to get back at their neighbors or something. Are you done? Yeah, okay. Steve?
That's certainly what I was saying too. There's a lot of people are afraid to complain because they're afraid who complain about is gonna learn who did it and they'll come at them. There's a lot of fear there. I don't think you do that, but the fear is still there.
So I think there's a critical policy question in here that we're not gonna solve tonight, but if you want to add observation, you know, type complaints is like, what is the standard to act, right? Like, you know, because there's a difference between something that would be a big either, you know, quality of life, safety issue, right? Like, and then, you know, something that you can technically call on a complaint for. And I I'm gonna guess that as we go down this conversation, where that line is, is gonna become really important for people to learn more about.
Yep, Joe. The reason for my question too is that and I like what Sean said as far as issues that are quality of life type issues versus somebody driving around and listing off seventy residences or seventy businesses that have got a a shed roof that are closer than five feet from the fence. So there's got to be, if you're considering officer-initiated enforcement, then I think there's got to be within the policy what those guidelines are so we don't have issues that just rise because someone's bored. I'm I'm not saying something's gotta be, I'm just saying, but I've seen it in different places, different cities in my career. I've seen it, so and it's very real. And so that's where I'm very hesitant in supporting any officer-initiated enforcement through code enforcement. Unless, of course, there's specific policy that helps protect from that, helps make sure that that, you know, you're talking about marginalized communities, et cetera, et cetera. That to me, it means to me is if there's issues, where it's at. And that's how you deal with it. It's not, if it's Billy Bob or whoever, it's it's a matter of dealing with those issues right up front. So I mean, I I I want to hear more, but right now I'd have to get not I'm not over that fence yet.
I understand, Council President, and we'll have some more details. There there's some very good ideas that I'm gonna work with through the city attorney's office as well. A clear policy is one of them. That's have to be, yeah.
And there's six court enforcement officers in Eugene.
Okay, anybody else?
I was just gonna make a a comment based on my observation of the city's level of staffing. And it seems as though just about everybody here does about a job and a half. And we're spread very, very thin, so you know, I was thinking about, I I I feel it would be extremely unlikely for somebody to have the time to just cruise around looking for problems when we have enough problems that just barrage at us on a daily basis. That's point one. Point two is, is incumbent upon management to set a culture where, you know, you don't get those outliers of people that are just looking to use their position in government as a way to, you know, mess with people or, you know, be just completely a little bit off the rails of the intent of what this is trying to do. The intent of what this is trying to do is have us have a a safe community, a beautiful city that we all can be proud of and it's not about, you know, measuring the height of your grass or where your gutter is, or that's not the intent here. So I think it's it's a multi-part thing where, you know, we're going to be working with the city attorney's office on this and they're, obviously they're great. But also us as management has to make sure that we are hiring the people that aren't really going to do that. And just as a fun fact, I shouldn't even say this on the record, but I find this kind of funny. With the serial killer, ETK was a code enforcement officer and he was very heavy-handed with people and turned out he was a serial killer and he it was like kind of a thing about the power, so I get it, what you're saying. We talk a lot about serial killers.
I think that gives you enough to get to June. For a less awkward transition. Thank you, guys.
Have a great coverage job. I'm having creep around the neighborhood.
All right, last item for the evening is natural resources inventory and protections for UGB expansion areas progress update. Oh, Molly?
Hi, good evening. I am going to share my screen and I'm also going to ask Allison, if you could bring Jacob Callister in as a panelist as well, that would be awesome. And I just need to be able to share my screen when you have a chance.
Allison's working on it.
Awesome. You should be able to, though. Okay, let's see. Can you all see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, I am going to minimize you all, and so if anyone has any questions during my presentation, please, Jake or someone else in the audience. please, Jake or someone else in the audience, let me know. So, good evening, Mayor and councilors. I'm Molly Markarian, Senior Planner with the city. I haven't been in front of the city council in a while and I know there's some new councilors. So just by way of background, I've been with the city for almost 16 years, serving in various planning related capacities. I took over as project manager for this particular project, the Natural Resource Inventories and Protections project for UGB expansion areas when my colleague Monica Sather went on leave at the end of last year. As you may recall, Land Council of Governments or LCOG has been assisting with this project and Jacob Callister is with us tonight. I'd also like to note that this project was, has been funded in part by a technical assistance grant from the Oregon Department of Land Conservation and Development. And Patrick Wingard, maybe in the audience as well. This project is focused on Springfield, looking at what's inside our urban growth boundary expansion areas to take care of what we have on the ground today before moving forward with future projects. And specifically identifying and protecting significant wetlands, riparian waterways and upland wildlife habitat. With the Land Conservation and Development Commission's acknowledgement of Springfield's urban growth boundary expansion in 2019, we are looking at just over 790 acres that are now Springfield's responsibility for planning. The Urban Growth Boundary, or UGB for short, expanded in the three darker areas shown on the map on the screen. The North Gateway area in Northwest Springfield, the Mill Race area in South Springfield, and a few parks along the northeast edge of Springfield, which we call the Willamette Properties. The expansion set out to accommodate a needed long-term supply of employment sites and bring key public lands into Springfield's UGB. About 270 acres are intended to make employment opportunities available for Springfield's target industries. The Springfield Utility Board, Willamette Parks and Recreation District and City of Springfield own about two thirds of the property within the areas we're talking about today. Over 450 acres are dedicated to public land and open space, which means that we can continue to make sure we are meeting future needs for education, recreation, and other services such as safe drinking water. I'd also like to note that a portion of the North Gateway area is within the floodway of the Mackenzie River, which is reserved for no development and is dedicated to natural resources. With the expanded UGB in place, the city has been doing the necessary planning to allow future development in these areas. One of the first steps is to locate and evaluate our natural resource assets such as wetlands, riparian corridors, and wildlife habitat. And to determine which resources offer significant benefits and should be locally protected. So the city can determine where to direct future development. This project really exemplifies the need to balance goals that can be thought of to sometimes be at odds with each other, such as conservation, while also accommodating job opportunities and public access. The bottom photo on the slide showcases how these project goals relate to and can even boost one another. As you can see, the mill race itself as a waterway under the bridge, with the mill race path providing opportunities for us to enjoy recreation. And the train tracks running alongside behind it in the Booth Kelly areas lumber mills. Our comprehensive plan conforms to Oregon's statewide planning goals and sets the stage for our work plan in the UGB expansion areas. Specifically, urbanization goal number four tells us that as the city grows and as land develops, we need to maintain and reinforce Springfield's identity as a river oriented community by emphasizing and strengthening physical connections between people and nature in the city's land development patterns and infrastructure design. Urbanization Policy 45 focuses on the restoration and management of the mill race in order to enhance public access to it. Urbanization Policy 47 and 48 require the completion of a local wetlands inventory and updates to Springfield's natural resources inventory. Urbanization Policy 50 calls for updating the water quality limited water courses map to include the North Gateway and Mill Race areas. And Urbanization Policy 51 calls for code protections to ensure that future development in employment designated land is designed and constructed in ways that maintain aquifer recharge and protect drinking water quality and quantity. Our work on this project is also helping our Park and Recreation District with their master planning and others who want to explore what they can do with their property by understanding where significant wetland, riparian areas, and wildlife habitat are. As you can see on this slide, this project has involved collaboration with many public agencies. At the center of the diagram is the Springfield community and many other interests because we as agencies are here to serve them and because key project tasks rely on their knowledge. Much has been accomplished since we kicked things off in early 2020. Our inventory of existing conditions and evaluation of resources has included public outreach, field investigations, and functional analysis. After several iterations, the Department of State Lands, or DSL, is conducting their final review of our wetland and riparian inventory and inventories and assessments. Their approval is anticipated this summer with few, with an expectation of few, if any, changes. Our wildlife habitat assessment is also in process and anticipated for completion this summer. With these steps nearing completion, we're moving in greater earnest to figure out how to protect the identified significant resources. The next few slides will cover what we have found. As the name implies, the local wetland inventory and assessment involves identifying and analyzing aquatic features in accordance with criteria outlined in the Oregon Administrative Rules. Specifically identifying the location, size, quality, condition, and local significance of those features. Our environmental consultants identified 30 total wetlands in the UGB expansion areas, 25, 29 of which are considered significant. For reference, these wetlands more than double Springfield's currently adopted list of 24 locally significant wetlands throughout the rest of the city. 92% of these newly identified wetlands are on publicly owned land. With the exception of within the North Gateway area, 92% are on privately owned land. Overall, 86% fall within land designated parks and public slash semi-public land. All documented wetlands within the North Gateway and Willamette Properties were determined to be locally significant. And all but one wetland within the Mill Race study area was determined to be locally significant. Wetlands in the North Gateway study area are on private property, but within the floodway on land designated natural resource. The Willamette Properties study area has the greatest percentage of wetland coverage, while the wetlands in the Mill Race study area cover the most amount of ground. Attachment two in your packet outlines what wetland and riparian corridors are and their key functions. Wetlands are determined to be locally significant should they meet criteria such as providing some wildlife habitat and have intact water quality functions. The full list is on the slide. Wetlands can have more than one of each function. We found that a wetlands connection to water quality was the most common reason for local significance in the UGB expansion areas. Hydrologic control and fish habitat were the next two most common reasons. Makes sense to find so many significant resources on the urban fringe, given that the UGB expansion areas brought into the UGB largely agricultural land that are, that is minimally developed. I'd also like to note that water quality protection is critical for Springfield's wellfields in the UGB expansion areas. Our riparian effort also involved identifying and analyzing aquatic features in accordance with criteria outlined in the Oregon Administrative Rules and Springfield's Natural Resources Study. The field work was done concurrently with the wetland field work. As shown on the slide, our environmental consultants found 24 riparian reaches, 23 of which were determined to be significant, totaling approximately 10 miles. For reference, Springfield's existing list of 20 significant riparian resources would double. In the North Gateway area, we found five riparian reaches on the Mackenzie River and Maple Island Slough. In the Willamette Properties study area, we found three riparian reaches comprised of the Kaiser Slough, Mackenzie River, Cedar Creek, and South Cedar Creek. And then in the Mill Race study area, we found 15 riparian reaches on Gore Creek, Middle Fork of the Willamette River, the Mill Race, Corey Creek, and sub well, wellfields. Again, attachment two in your packet talks about key functions of riparian corridors. Those functions are noted on the slide, help determine significance. Our environmental consultants ranked the quality of significant corridors. And as you can see on the slide, many ranked as high or an exceptional quality. The exceptional quality corridors are spread throughout the study areas, but most are in the Mill Race study area. Using the safe harbor approach under the Oregon Administrative Rules, our environmental consultants evaluated the potential for the study areas to support what are known as sensitive status species. This is not a cut and dry process or criteria. So we've had many conversations with the Oregon Department of Land Conservation and Development and the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife. Our environmental consultants mapped suitable habitat for 23 sensitive status species for whom they designated the potential to occur as occurs or likely to occur. The city is currently working with local Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife staff and LCOG towards a final significance assessment. Local Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife knowledge helps refine real habitat potential to support sensitive status species. We're also looking to the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife to more clearly demarcate where significant wildlife habitat falls outside of riparian or wetland protection areas, also known as upland areas. As I mentioned earlier, we are now moving from the stage of inventory and assessment in this project to determine which path Springfield will pursue to protect the significant resources that have been identified. And interconnected with that, where development is best directed. I think it's helpful to consider how Springfield has approached resource protection elsewhere in the city and the existing structure that we have in place. As noted on the slide and in attachment three in your packet, the existing regulatory framework starts with the statewide structure at the top and then outlines how Springfield has met those regulations to date with our stormwater quality management program and natural resources study. The Natural Resources Study follows what is referred to as the standard method for protection, wherein the economic, social, environmental, and energy analysis is utilized. Well, that is also known as the EC analysis, is utilized to just justify a more nuanced natural resource protection program. Some uses are allowed, limited, or prohibited with specific protections in place. The analysis formally lays out the justification decision process to protect, partially protect, or not protect resources by looking at the consequences of not allowing, partially allowing, or fully allowing uses that may be considered incompatible with natural resources, also known as conflicting uses. To date, Springfield has elected to pursue the limit conflicting uses approach through setbacks and site plan review as implemented in Springfield's development code. As I just noted, Springfield has a regulatory structure in place today that includes policies precedent with inventory and assessments, an analytic framework, and existing implementation provisions that newly identified natural resources can be integrated into. That said, the state framework outlines different paths communities can take to protect newly designated newly identified significant resources. The path that Springfield has elected to pursue in the past, both the initial work and then in the Glenwood update in 2011, is what's called the standard method. Using an EC analysis has allowed Springfield to balance development priorities with natural resource protections, setting the precedent for a highly flexible dynamic. The question before Springfield is whether there are any compelling reasons to change course in our approach. Some possible considerations. The UGB is largely an undeveloped urban wildland interface, so we might want to take a closer look. Well, the standard approach is more qualitative, while a safe harbor approach is more prescriptive and not necessarily more protective of significant resources. We might want to think about the time and effort to get to the adoption stage. Yes, the standard method requires more time and effort on the front end, but we would need new code provisions with the safe harbor approach. Then we could consider one path for public or private versus public utility land. But that does not seem efficient to administer nor clear for the public to understand. As outlined in attachment, in the attachment three memo, staff recommends continuing with the standard protection method for newly identified significant natural resources in the UGB expansion areas. To ultimately meet statewide planning goal five, the inventories and preferred protection options will result in an update to Springfield's Natural Resources Study and possibly the Springfield Development Code. Tonight's check-in will inform how we approach talking with stakeholders and developing draft content to update the Springfield Natural Resources Study and possibly the Springfield Development Code in the months ahead. And so with that, this up for questions and any feedback that you may have on the recommendations.
I do. I was on May pack back in the late seventies when we, we did the urban growth boundary. And code five was a big, big deal back, even back then. We've been studying that for like 40 years. And we're still trying to come up with numbers. Why is that?
So I guess I'm not fully following that question, I guess.
following that question. I guess the the purpose of what we're working on right now are identifying the significant natural resources in the area of the city where we expanded in twenty nineteen. So that North Gateway area, the Willamette Properties and the Mill Race area, we aren't looking citywide. What's happened citywide and what happened in Glenwood, that's on the books. This is just for those new areas.
If you're talking about the new areas, I understand that, but all I know is back, back when we did back in the early eighties, everybody freaked out over major five or or number five because really going to affect building properties, the whole city and the whole area. And so uh anyway, we were doing inventories, I've been doing inventories for forty years and uh so we're still adding to it. What's changed? Well, okay, we have a new urban growth boundary, so I guess there's property in there that would be to change, but like uh. Okay.
So I could add real quick that I think one to to that point, um there's a lot of strength in the existing inventory and the existing policy and um regulation and and so staff's recommendation is to really take the strength of what's been done and and um and use that as a strong precedent. So I think as a essentially consistent with what you're saying, there there is a strong history of of existing mapping and inventory and regulation and so sort of a a wheel that's been invented and and the recommendation is to fold into that.
Dope. So on these um areas that you're identifying are and I'm and I'm not going to use all that scientific stuff, so forgive me. So the areas you're identifying uses to further restrict use on areas that already have restrictions on them? To increase the amount, I mean, so if you got one area, let's say, okay, let's boil it down, let's say the Mill Race. The Mill Race has got restrictions on it and it's got agreements on it. So are you suggesting, because that's also part of the inventory, that these new designations as sensitive areas are going to have further restriction as to their access and use? Or you're going, are you not touching what we have, you're just including more areas? I don't understand the fold.
Sure, so I if I'm if I'm understanding correctly, I think that maybe it's helpful to think about, for instance, in the North Gateway area, like I mentioned, the significant wetland happens to be in an area that's designated natural resource. And so um development can't happen on that particular sliver of land anyway. And so we, you know, we're not going to be putting more restrictions on that. But if there is a significant uh riparian corridor that goes through, for example, employment designated land, um we would be putting on that. What we would be proposing is what we do elsewhere in the city, which is a certain setback from that significant riparian corridor, so that development would occur, could occur, but not within that setback of that particular uh significant.
And once a concern with, for example, um on yours that designations, is that going to limit or prohibit citizen access to those water areas or wetlands?
Um Jake, do you want to take that one?
Sure. Uh one of the values that wetlands are evaluated for is um social. Uh every every wetland, if the standard method that we're discussing is pursued, then you look at the environmental, the social, the um economic and the energy consequences of any protection. And so a lot of these areas are on public lands. Um they're either being preserved uh for water quality preservation purposes. Um or there's an educational component, recreational component, you know, there are some uses that are allowed. And so every resource is evaluated typically. Impacts are really about the fill and removal of of earth. And so um a lot of these on public lands frankly will will probably be in a better state for, you know, appropriate levels of of public access. And there's a real opportunity there um for a lot of those areas. So it's not really a plan for wetlands uh and riparian areas so much as it is ensuring that certain activities, primarily development, the removal of earth, the uh introduction of certain kinds of impacts that this speaks to. And then kind of framing up ways that they could be used otherwise, but but uh education, recreation, those are things that are definitely put uh in the balance.
Okay. Um that's a whole bucket full there. So I guess what it boils down to for a follow-up is that we worked directly with Judge Ziller, who is a local biologist through ODFW in the Mill Race project years ago. And part of the agreements that we had with ODFW and even in the riparian areas is to make sure and guarantee that citizens have access to these these areas or aquatic areas and have access for fishing as opposed to closing them down to that access or restricting it. So our young citizens have will no longer have those areas which they could be taken to go just as simple as as an activity as taking fishing. So in in this, in the, under the cloak of of protections in riparian areas. And I think that that there's a tendency for over-restriction um and lack of use. You look at the McKenzie McKenzie River Trust with Joe Zoll, Joe Zoll, who's the seat, the director of that agency or that organization. They've got pretty tight restrictions, but they've taken up a lot of land. And so it's it's that I'm very concerned about our young citizens having adequate access and plenty of access so they can grow up in that environment of being with their parents, going fishing, the simple, simple recreational activities that I think is so important to our citizens. So I would oppose anything that's going to be restricting.
Yeah, the I I think it's more um in alignment with what you're talking about. The the fear is sort of the opposite of what you're talking about. So that those those resources would not be available for future generations for those um functions that they serve, but also the ways that they provide real social value and social functions. So I, one essential test to this is how your existing um codes around stormwater management and around natural resources prohibit that sort of activity now in Springfield, because essentially the new resources um become subject to those codes. As I've become familiar with those over the last of a while, I don't see anything that is explicit about prohibiting the kinds of activities that you just described.
Okay, well, that's important. I mean, when we let the hospital in along the river, that was part of the agreements we allowed people to build there is that they had to have physical areas in which citizens can access that river so they don't sew up that riverbank. So that's that's extremely important. And that if those areas that you're designating, I would just hate to see those become landlocked or uh barriers which people cannot access our waterways. I'm there to put my opinion out there.
So Jacob, Molly, can you just clarify, right? Because I think this is an important portion. I know that we're gonna, we're gonna see this again in the fall. We're gonna get a chance to adopt, actually look at sort of language, you know, a little bit further along. But as a starting point, right? How that whatever we go go forward with is going, when we talk about these additional wetlands, right? That we're not, that any code updates that we make are going to protect the public's access to the waterway. Is that accurate?
Did I?
Sure. Kind of a big principle here that we're just like, if as long as we're kind of walking out of this meeting on the right foot here.
Yeah, so I'll try and then maybe Molly or Jake can add in, but um. So the the when a resource is designated significant on public land, the regulations in and of themselves are not going to change anybody's access to it. What it would say is maybe you can't build a concrete path right to the river's edge. You might have to leave that as natural ground. People can still walk to the river, but they may not be able to build that concrete path because like Jake had said, that's impacting that riparian area with um the construction. So how you access it in terms of like what the facility may be or that you can't be removing some of the native plant species in order to be able to get access to the river? So if you're walking through, um you know, you can remove blackberries. Those are not native. You know, we can take those away.
They feel native sometimes.
Actually, do. So those, those are the kinds of things, it's the regulations of the type of plants that you can't remove the native vegetation, but it's not going to actually change access in terms of a who can go there or type of thing. And if it's on public land already.
Okay, good.
It'll get to the public entity to manage that. And then on private land, um people don't have access unless the private owners want to grant it to them.
So what about excess with paths? Where folks are saying, hey, too many people are using this. They're messing up the riparian area. Let's close it.
Well, if people are abusing that, that may happen. I mean, I think part of that, like they were saying, is to protect that water quality and the functions. And if the if people are abusing that, um then there's they then then there may need to be a more restriction on how that access happens.
Uh you use the term abusing, but I'm just using the term using. And so it depends upon the use. And so the more areas you get more restrictive, other areas are going to get higher use. And so that's my fear. You know that that all the rivers along the McKenzie, along the Springfield, the entire McKenzie River, um kids used to access through, by going through the school properties, going back behind the junior high, et cetera, and go fishing every day. Used to see them walking with their fishing poles. You don't see that anymore because it's not allowed. It's fly fishing only now, and so kids don't fly fish. And so they have no river fishing along Springfield now, and that was because of a simple rule. That's why I'm so sensitive to it is because there's more and more areas that kids can't access just to go have fun fishing in the afternoon. So I get very sensitive to this when people are talking about their waterways. I want to make sure everything, everything I can do to protect access for my kids' recreation.
Jacob?
Just a follow-up on that, um. Uh so one of the things to point out, I I think I'm not familiar with, so this is in your development codes. It really is about um development, so that that kind of more the policies around the uses that maybe Willamette would establish or um sub or any of the other owners um isn't something that this uh this this adoption would speak to directly. The other thing I wanted to point out is that, you know, one of the nice things about the EC analysis is that it really takes all of those elements into balance. And so there are instances where an impact, uh let's say, uh access a raised platform or something could be justified because of the social benefit. You're saying the social benefit of creating access to young people, to to folks who want to recreate is such that it really outweighs any sort of 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 impact at that the feature experiences. So there are ways to do development that would facilitate maybe lower impact, you know, in the long run, access. Um and so that easy approach is one way to to enable some flexibility there. It's really the main advantage of that approach.
Don't get me wrong, I'm I'm okay with prohibiting development up to river's edge. I'm totally fine with that. I'm just wondering, I'm looking at that, the access portion of it, but I support that part of watching what our development does near waterways. I completely support that.
So the two questions that I had, the first was around the Oxbow area, which has got everybody's favorite piece of infrastructure in it, which is, which is the levee. So most of that is identified as wetlands in this. Would any binding or identification that is in the kind of proposed report impact our ability to stabilize the channel or maintain the maintain the levee in the future? Because all of that is on man-made levy right now.
That would be an example. Oops, go ahead, Molly.
Uh I was gonna say that's something that we wouldn't want to have happen, but we, I wouldn't be able to say that right now. I'd have to look into it further and then. But if you have more information.
I was just gonna add that it's something that would come up. Again, every every one of these features is going to be, the the proposal at least, is to run every one of the features through an assessment of sort of these vulnerabilities, these dynamics to say, on balance, what's the right approach here? So there's, there can be a, there can be nuance for that particular feature that says in the event of such and such, you know, the the broader importance of of this uh social value, of this economic value is such that an impact is merited, an environmental impact. And so the Oxbow would be an instance, a good example of something that could accommodate some nuance.
So I put it more simply, let's say, if that area is designated to whatever you want to designate it in the Oxbow area to the east of the the dyke. If the dyke is going to be rebuilt, is any part of these designations going to stymie the rebuilding of that dyke or make it more difficult or slow it down?
So I think what Jake was saying is that the analysis and the um designation, so to speak, of that land can be described such that um it it that would it happen?
So we're adding glued uh what the window of work, the envelope, the core of engineers is in right now. Or and I understand you may have to take away and and look at some of this stuff.
Well, so we aren't even anticipating that we would bring um adoption of the of the updates to the natural resource study to you until the fall at the earliest, maybe even the winter. So I think um it 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 definitely wouldn't have an impact on something that's happening right here and now today.
Yeah, so so the core, I think, is working for the next twenty-four months. And and I know we can't, we're not going to solve this one tonight. I just want to make sure that we're walking away, making sure that like when we look sort of left to right about all the different projects that are going on in Springfield right now, that we're actually talking and sort of vetting this. I would hate to have the adoption of a, you know, you know, a natural resources plan impact, you know, the sustainability of of that levy, right? Considering that it impacts, you know, I don't know, four billion dollars worth of property. And I would encourage you to, when we get further down this road, to take that language and just bet it for as many people as possible, because these are the kind of things that break five steps down the road when we don't logic check them at this point. It's way easier to fix right now than it is uh down the road from here.
It was done a while back and it was surely not comprehensive, but there was definitely a component of our kind of earliest memos around this that was the anticipation characterization of projects, because those were played directly into that easy analysis to say, what are the anticipated projects? Because that's why you do an easy analysis, is to understand where, you know, your system plans are are um conflicting or interacting with the the inventory so that you can. The idea is really to navigate a nice balanced um decision-making process and then just just, you know, enumerate the the pros and cons, the consequences, and then and then justify your decision. And that's, that's a program that DLCD supports and outlines as as um, you know, acceptable.
Okay, uh the other question that I had was strictly around the Mill Race portion where those wellheads are. Is any particular, like ultimately, this is protecting water quality of our water intake points. Does this, whatever this protection is, is it going to create a situation where the county side of their lands matches our side? Or is it going to create like the a situation where, you know, we've got better like that we've got better water quality protection for our wellheads in the Springfield side and the county side? Does that make sense? Do you want me to try to phrase it a different way?
Uh I'm not fully tracking, but Sandy, maybe you, were you?
What do you mean by the county side?
Well, because across the river, right, it is, it's county land, right? So if you look, think about those famous time and transit zones, right, some of the lands that are across the river are in those well. Uh, are in those wellhead, you know, time and transit zones, right? If I'm remembering right, and I guess, and I guess I know it's a little bit to the side of us, uh, of, uh, the scope of this project. But ultimately, I'm asking, okay, as we add protections over here, right? What's the point where we're having the conversations that says, okay, the county, you still need to, you know, add protections for our. Water quality on your side that sort of match that, does that make sense?
Yes.
And it's a little bit more broad than this, I think I'm asking, but I'm just, when I saw that, that was the first place I went to is. You know, we're protecting water qua, the county still has a role in protecting our water quality.
Well, I think, um, what comes to mind when you raise that is the effort that the county took particularly along the McKenzie. To do some of that and there was a lot of pushback. Um, on that, and so I don't think they actually ever adopted anything. And I don't think that Springfield has ever formally asked the county to adopt. Additional regulations for the time of travel zones for the wellhead protection areas. Um, which is probably more important than the riparian or wetland resources, um. I've talked to Amy Chinins about that in terms of subs, wellhead protection areas and. At the time, which is several years ago now, they didn't want to take that on. Um, that would really be more of a sub-led effort than a city-led, of course, we would partner with them, but.
Well, I would go with sub list.
Yeah, because, I mean, the riparian and wetland areas do add that water quality benefit. But it's really that time of travel zone that's going to be the critical piece for protecting the wells.
Only me in on this one, I just proved that, you know, I'm only a water quality specialist on TV. Anybody else have other questions? Okay, Molly, do you have the direction you need?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
And I'll say that your, your comments about the levy in particular support. Taking that standard approach rather than the safe harbor, because with that safe harbor. It's just the same regulation applies across the board to everything and I'm hearing that, that. Standard approach where you have the nuances important to you.
Yes, I would agree with that.
I, I think one thing to just throw in there, sorry, just as a last thought, because it's been bugging me since I didn't say anything earlier, was that there's local. Regulation around these resources and then once they're identified on an inventory. There are also state, Department of State Lands, um, requirements. And Corps of Engineer requirements, and so those are typically quite a bit more, um. There, there's more allowance there, so they're typically more. Uh, you know, accepting of the kinds of things that you're describing, the thresholds are quite a bit larger, but. Um, local regulation is just one piece of it, so just wanted to, to make sure it's clear that there's. There's layers of regulation that exist on any existing wetland mapped or not, but now we have some new ones matched in Springfield, so.
Yep, so, um, just briefly on the partnerships. Or any of our partners that you described earlier on your slide, are they? This, this study or analysis is not free, right? I mean, it's costing money, staff money, whatnot, is anybody helping with the cost of this analysis or are they, they don't really have a dog in the fight?
Well, we did receive, um. A technical assistance grant from the Department of Land Conservation and Development. We've received two actually, so, um, two different cycles of grants. Um, that, uh, have been helping to cover the cost of, uh, the consultant.
And so actually contributed up to that first round as well, they. Provided some financial support and then Willamalane has provided technical assistance as well.
So I, I look towards potentially a special grant from O D F W, especially that, that Oxbow area. Because that is a, a high, high concern area for the fish in that area. And so it may be something that they can help us with preservation of that levy, I just never thought about asking them. They usually got tons of cash.
All right. Thank you guys very much, have a good night.
All right, you too.
Thank you.
Thank you.